Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Thank you for coming. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please? Mayor Dickey? I'm sorry. Did you start?
Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
President.
Councilmember Charno.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
President.
Thank you. The first thing we do are reports by the mayors, council members, and town manager. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and for the public who are here tonight, I just wanted to let you know as part of my report, we celebrated our employee anniversary event last week. We had about 40 employees that were there, and it was a great way of recognizing employees who have had five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years of service. Culminated at the end of the event for our town engineer, who we're very fortunate, who has been with us for 28 years. He was recognized for his 25 years. That's Randy Harrell. And Randy Harrell is the longest continuously serving town engineer in Arizona. So we're very pleased to have him part of our town. And he was actually with our town at the time we incorporated, or shortly thereafter. But anyways, it's a great way. We had a great function, and it was a great way to recognize our employees. We gave them plaques for their years of service.
Thank you, Grady. It was wonderful to be there. Mike, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, sorry I missed that luncheon. I had something else going. But, you know, I was with the newspaper at the time and got to give Randy his first big spread in the paper as, you know, one of the first hires of the town. So that's how far back I go, too. But anyways, yeah, I was at some state-of-the-town thing or something last week. I don't know. But maybe someone else can address that. But the only other report I have is I did attend Valley Metro Board Meeting last week. Nothing significant. We did go and executive review Scott Smith, our CEO, his performance. But we didn't have any kind of vote afterward. It was still pending. So that's about it.
Thank you. Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to thank John Wesley, Justin Welding, Pulk, David Pulk for putting on the Development Advisory Seminar. It was attended by a good deal of staff and several builders and several developers. It's the first of many. Our next one will be in September. And if you're interested in developing and building in the town of Fountain Hills, I would highly recommend coming to the seminars. They are very informative.
Thank you. Councilman? Yes, councilman?
Mayor, I'd like to follow up on Councilman Charno's very brief comment about the state-of-the-town address, the mayor's state-of-the-town address, which many of you may not have been aware of. But it was a standing room only, 250-plus people. And it was extremely well done. And particularly, what I want to compliment the mayor on is having each of the department heads on the screen speaking to the audience about what they do, what their plans are, and so on. I think that really helps to build camaraderie in having people work together like that. In my tenure here, that's never happened. And so I want to compliment you for that.
Thank you. Alan? Anyone else? Yes. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to add to that, counselman, and comment and compliment the mayor on the delivery of her message, a very uplifting and unifying message on her state of the town. Great job, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. I appreciate that. We had our volunteer expo last week. And I don't know what the attendance was, but it seemed pretty great to me. It's always a wonderful way for our clubs and organizations and all our volunteers to show what they do, which is quite a lot in our town. We had AmeriKobe Association of Governments Regional Council Meeting. We talked about grants, talked about the census, which you've all heard about. And we're going to have a presentation on Prop 400 Renewal, which is the transportation. It's been 20 years or so, probably at our next meeting. I went to the Fountain Hills Unified School District's Learning Center where they had a breakfast to honor the mentors. And some of them have been there for 20 years. And it was wonderful. We had a proclamation, and it was just a nice show of appreciation for the mentors. Went to the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, National Site Selector and Venture Capital Firm Downtown. They were all here for the waste management. I tell our economic development director and Grady that I'm a fish out of water sometimes at those things. But it's always great to meet them and let them know what a great place Fountain Hills is to do business. And lastly, I wanted to mention that on Thursday, that's when the Pony Express comes through Fountain Hills. You know, they start in Holbrook, they go to Payson, they come here, and then they go to Scottsdale. So they're coming to the post office around 3:00 or 3:30. And they're going to bring it over to our parking lot. And we're going to have a nice event there. We should have several letters that some of the mayors and other people from around the state are sending us to congratulate us on our 50th anniversary. And I think there's going to be live music. And in addition to the actual horses, there's going to be some ponies there. And we made it so that we'll be at 3:30. So hopefully, everybody will be out of school and can come by. So that will be on Thursday, the 6th. And that's it for that. Anybody else have anything? No? Next, we have what I think a lot of you are here for, which is a recognition of our Stellar Students of the Month. I'm going to read part of what the teachers said about the kids up here. Then I'll come down and I'll give them the certificates. And the whole remarks are on the back. So the kids will see what nice things were said about them. I'm going to start with Riley Taylor. We have two from each school. McDowell Mountain Elementary. Riley is more than a stellar student. She is the epitome of a trusted friend. She jumps at the chance to help her classmates, and she's always the first to volunteer to help the teacher. She's a wonderful student who always does her very best in class. And Riley has immense pride in her school and shows it daily. Next, we have Dylan Tobias, also from McDowell Mountain. Not only does Dylan always do his best on his academic schoolwork, but he's extremely polite and considerate of others. In STEM class, he's very capable and excels at whatever we're working on. But what impresses most is the way he looks out for others and steps in to help when needed. Now we go to the middle school. We have Aisha Rasool from the Fountain Hills Middle School. Aisha has great citizenship. She helps her peers, keeping them encouraged when they ask for help. She makes good decisions regarding positive behavior and has great respect for the school staff. She's a quiet, sweet person, a very intelligent and diligent worker. She shows compassion and empathy. Next is Daniel Garcia, also from the middle schools. Daniel comes to school with a positive attitude and a smile. He's courteous, opening doors for others, and always going out of his way to help. Daniel is involved in multiple activities and maintains stellar grades. His positive attitude and energy are contagious, and he consistently sets the example for his peers. Wow. Now we have Sophia, I think they call Sophie? Sophie Bayshon's from Fountain Hills High. Sophie is a wonderful student who works hard and enjoys it. She always has a smile on her face and is a great leader. She participates in numerous extracurricular activities, including the Business Leaders Academy. She's drum major, is a talented clarinet player, and president of the marching band. These positions require focus and musical intelligence. She balances all of this with AP classes and a job, and she is loved by her peers. And last but not least, we have Blake Anderson from the Fountain Hills High School. Blake Anderson is a model student and citizen. He's very capable in his studies and self-motivated, but always willing to help. Get a theme here, don't you? He is capable and knowledgeable student who is well-regarded by his peers and teachers. He puts in the time to make things work in sports and all the other activities, including National Honor Society, robotics, and band leadership position. Blake is one of the shining stars with an even brighter future ahead. Now, all of you students who are here, if you'll come right down, I'll give you your certificates, and we can take a picture. How's that? So Riley, are you Riley? Dylan? Aisha? Thank you. Daniel? Sitting up because it's in age order.
Thank you.
Sophie. And Blake. Thank you so much. We'll get a picture, and then we'll give you a nice big round of applause. How's that? If any of the guys from the school district want to come up, they're welcome to do that now.
Tighten up real good here.
Tighten up. We like each other. How's that? Is that good? Thank you so much. Oh, well. Sorry about that. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation recognizing Alco Community Services Advisory Commissioner, Daniel Affecto. Daniel's not here, but I'm going to read what was said about him, and then we'll give him his certificate later. Daniel began serving on the Community Services Advisory Commission in February 2019 and was an integral part in our policy discussions regarding leash ordinances, dog park rules, and responsible pet ownership within our parks. During Dan's time on the Community Services Advisory Commission, he served on the Dog Park Rules and Dogs at Golden Eagle Park workgroups. He's also active within the town as a member of the Sunset Kiwanis and Sister Cities. He assisted with Make a Difference Day 2019 and was an advocate for Sister Cities sponsorship for the community center takeover. We thank Daniel for his service. And like I said, we'll get him this separately. Next is our scheduled public appearances and presentations. First, we have our captain, Larry Kratzler, from MCSO, who's going to give us his monthly report, which I guess this time's kind of a month-and-a-half report because we pushed you off. But we're happy to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It was good to be back. I was able to take a little paternity leave. So sorry I missed you guys last month.
Yay.
I'm going to go over and a couple of, some of our stats and just kind of show you how we use our stats to kind of determine our personnel allocation or where we put our resources. So it may not be very visible for the folks in the audience, but we'll do the best we can here. All right. Yeah, it's going to be hard to see. I'll talk through most of this for the folks in the audience. But these are the reports that we get each month from our statisticians downtown. They put together these reports for each district. And so I just want to quickly go over some of the things that we look at and kind of show you folks how we determine staffing and availability of resources. So we get this broke down each month, and this is provided to the town. But we get top 20 calls for service. And then, so that's any calls that are dispatched, a call from the public that goes to our dispatch. And then our top 20 on-view calls for service. We get a three-year snapshot so we can kind of gauge what it looks like from year to year, if there's a trend upward or downward. And then the far-right category is a top 20 calls for service with a report. I'm not going to read all of these just because they're kind of cumbersome. But, excuse me. Our top 20 calls for service are typically welfare checks. And that's usually when somebody calls in to ask that we go and check on a resident or a home or a vehicle for a concern or just to make sure that, for check their welfare. Then we have false burglar alarms. That's a big one that we get pretty regularly. Anytime an alarm company calls us, we respond and just make sure it is a false alarm and not a burglary in progress. Citizen motorists Assist, we get a lot of those. Civil Actions, Suspicious Persons. So now we start getting into the ones that are more of an on-view, maybe a criminal element involved, the suspicious persons. So you could just see the comparison from 2018 to 19 to 2020. And with 2020, that only includes one month of numbers. So that's why it's relatively low to the other months. But it lets us know if we're on par or if we're trending upward or downward. Top 20 on-view. Patrol Vacation Watches. Our deputies do a lot of, so on-view is anything that a deputy initiates on their own. So Patrol Vacation Watches. We take requests from residents for those. Or deputies just do them on their own, with or without a request. But people can put that in to say, "I'm going to be out of town from this time to this time. Please check my property." Traffic violation. I'll hit on that a little bit more. But you could see 2020 just incorporates one month of time. So that's January. So for 2020, we had 340 traffic stops here in Fountain Hills compared to 2018 for the entire year. There was 775. 2019, we had 2052. So it was a really good month. Prior to that, a good month on average for us that we were trying to hit, that I was seeing that deputies were hitting, were about 200. So you can see the added emphasis on traffic enforcement with 340 traffic stops. Traffic Control, speeders, school programs. I'm going to go down. One of the things that this also indicates is major crime indicators. So if you scroll down here, it'll give you the snapshot from, again, three-year picture of time. It shows the assaults from the last three years, burglaries, homicide. Fortunately, we've had zero in 2020. Motor vehicle thefts, robberies, and then sexual violations. And all those numbers are relatively low, even for a one-month snapshot. So we're doing good in those areas. If we come down to page two of this, again, it just highlights the top 10 on-view. It gives you a little bit smaller of a snapshot. Again, traffic violations are our top 10 on-view, which is a good thing. That's what we're looking for. Top 10 calls with reports, traffic violations, found properties, suspicious activity, thefts, vehicle crash with no injuries. And then areas of special interest. We have normal calls, you know, that happen in any community. We get some attempted suicides, narcotics or drug calls, and sexual assaults. Those are very low, 211 with a total of four for those areas. So again, Fountain Hills is a very safe place. These stats and our reports indicate that and support that. This is another thing that we look at. So calls by service by day of the week. So you can see Monday through Sunday. I have to scroll to get that.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Captain, could we get copies of this?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I really can't read it. It's a lot of detail.
Okay. Yes, we can get you copies of this for sure. So you can see, what we see is the busiest time of the weeks for us are Wednesday, Thursday, and typically Fridays. That's when we have the highest call volume. So usually, our busiest day of the week. Makes sense with people traveling to and from work. But then it breaks it down also. Then we have our areas of special interest, the burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, sexual violations. But these are the things we really use to kind of decide where to put personnel and when to stack up, maybe specific days of the week. We get calls for service by the days of the week. So this shows us for the last three years again. But it helps us in deciding, you know, Fridays are definitely a busy day for calls for service, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then it breaks it down by time of the day and even hour of the day. So you can see for Fountain Hills, it starts picking up around 8:00 in the morning and stays fairly busy for Fountain Hills until about 6:00 PM. And then it starts tapering off. Folks are getting home and getting ready for work the next day. And then it breaks it down even more by hour of the day. You can see how many calls and reports were taken by hour of the day. So I just wanted to share a little bit of that with you. And yes, we can absolutely get you copies of that so you can kind of see what we see and what those stats look like. But I just thought it was important to show you that, you know, we don't just go off a whim and think, but we actually do it through analytics and make sure that our staffing is in the right area. For the sake of time, I just wanted to talk briefly on a project that MCSO is going to implement soon. Want to thank Councilmember Spelitch for continually asking me about the Ring Partnership because I did bring that up several months ago. And I just want to provide an update. He's on me regularly about that update, which, again, I appreciate. We had some legal issues with that, and they're just working through it. I think we're waiting on an opinion from MCAO, the county attorney's office, on some privacy concerns that we had and redaction issues. So we're hoping that still is a viable option for the agency because it's very helpful, and I really see the value in that. What we are going to implement, and I'm hearing April 2020, I'm optimistic that we stay on schedule for that, is the Next Door app. So I won't take a lot of time to, I'm not trying to plug it or promote it, but it's something that MCSO is going to use. And that's an app that you can subscribe to. It's free. And what, how it can help MCSO. You can use that for neighbor, you know, neighbors can talk to each other on that and talk about the yard sales and things like that. But where it helps law enforcement is we are able to select an area geographically. You can draw a map around an area you want to push information out to. And then we can put whatever message out to that area we need. So whether it's the entire community of Fountain Hills or just one neighborhood, you know, looking for videos that they may have for a crime. Or just saying, "We're seeing a rash of vehicle break-ins in your area, you know, please keep your cars locked." Gives us an opportunity to reach out to the public. I know there was some talk about possibly using Facebook and monitoring it. That's just a large undertaking. This doesn't allow the back-and-forth comments or the public comments. They can, people can in the public respond to law enforcement and say that they have video or whatever, but it'll come to a direct email to the captain of the district or the lieutenant of the district. And we can manage it a lot better. We don't have to monitor it 24/7, especially if something were to come in there or comment that might need our addressing. And you don't have to go back and forth if people like to engage in arguments either on that. So we think it's going to be a very helpful way for us to push out communication to the public, especially specific communities. And when we have events like Coffee with the Cop, we can push it out to the entire community. So we're thinking it's going to be a really good program for us to use. But as we get closer, I'll try to provide some more detail and let you know the launch date for that. That's all I have for the update. Is there any questions from the council?
Thank you, Captain. Councilman?
Captain, I want to, we've had previous conversations about speeding in town, which has been a significant problem. But I want to thank you because I think we've made a lot of progress. I've seen more cruisers and more traffic stops in the last six months than any other time I've been in town. And I'm hoping that it's paying off and people are getting the message.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And yes, concerns by the council and the public definitely were heard, and we are working hard to increase traffic enforcement and speed enforcement for the safety of pedestrians and other motorists. It's important, and it helps keep, it helps in make sure that people are being safe, especially with all the walkers and bikers that we have in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Spelitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Captain, I don't believe citizens realize when a police department is put under a federal consent decree, having personal knowledge of this, traffic stops plummet. And the reason that traffic stops plummet is officers are monitored on who they stop, the race, the ethnicity of the person. And officers are very worried about being reported for misconduct based on their traffic stops. It is a huge number to see the significant increase in traffic stops in town while we're under a federal monitoring, while your department is under a federal monitoring program. And I, I mean, hats off to you. I mean, because that's motivating an officer who is worried about his career and his pension and his livelihood. So that's a, I can't stress to the residents that the increase in those numbers is significant. And it shows that the officers that work for you respect you and have your back. And we, as the council, can complain and everything, but you will find no malcontent in the world other than a disgruntled police officer. So to motivate, that is, just hats off to you. And I can see, I think all council members will agree that, you know, the Indianapolis 500 on Palisades, people are slowing down, Swarle, people are slowing down. You can tell that there's, the word is getting out in town that you guys are really enforcing it. So hats off to you. And it's a milestone to have those kind of number increases.
Thank you, Councilmember Spelitch. And one of the things I can say is definitely the feedback from council when I got here about that being a major area of concern was something we had to sit down and decide how to tackle. And, you know, one of the biggest motivating factors for us to get deputies out there and do that, even under the court order that you spoke about, most of the deputies that work here love to work in this town. And so the message was pretty clear. If they want to continue working in the town, the council's asking us and the mayor for added enforcement. And, you know, there's plenty of other areas in the office that they can go work where maybe they're busy with calls for service because it's a very busy district. And here, we have the luxury of having the time to do traffic enforcement. So I think that was a resound, a way to really motivate them. And I think them understanding that the town was serious about needing that added enforcement. So definitely give credit to the council for that being a major area of concern. So, thank you. Did work. Any other questions?
Thank you, David. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it so much. And congratulations. Next, we have our, well, there you go.
That's a first.
Well, speaking of service, so our next presentation is an update by Stephen Herring with Republic Services. Hi there. Glad to see you.
Good to see you as well. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thanks for having me today. What I wanted to talk to you about is just the upcoming bulk season What I wanted to talk to you about is just the upcoming bulk season and how we're communicating that and update that so that everybody gets to utilize this great service that is one of the new pieces of the new contract. And then additionally, I wanted to give an update for the community and council on recycling and just kind of share where we're at with that, what's happening to the material from Fountain Hills and then take any questions that you may have. So first with bulk. This is a continuation of a program that started last year with the new contract. So every resident is entitled to one free bulk pickup service. The way we do this is a spring cleaning format. So every resident received a letter last year with a map on it and we broke out the town into eight zones. And each of those zones is color coordinated and has a specific day that's going to be the pickup day. Additionally, when that letter went out, it had my contact information on it and I've have since fielded over a thousand emails, residents asking for which zone they have. And I'm happy to answer those. And what I do as well is send a digital copy of the schedule and the guidelines associated with the bulk pickup. And this year, we've redistributed that information. So been getting more emails as well, which is totally fine. Happy to answer those. And each resident will be getting a phone call from our automated call system the week before the bulk service begins. This service starts in March, so that it'll be every Wednesday from March through the end of April, eight weeks total. And each zone will get a call before their bulk pickup is scheduled, just recommunicating that. And then residents can put that material out the day before service and we'll pick it all up. So very easy process. Been working with Raymond and Grady with the town to ensure that that information is on the town's website as well.
In fact, if I can just interrupt Stephen. Also, the community newsletter is about ready to go out to every household. I believe it should be going out later this week, if not the beginning of next week. We have the schedule color coded showing everybody that, so it'll hit every household as well.
And The Times had an article with a map in it too, so we appreciate that, Bob.
All right. Should I take questions on bulk?
Yeah, any other questions on bulk pickup? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Now shifting gears to recycling. As many of you are aware, if not all, in October, we experienced a fire at the River Recycling Facility, which is where the recyclables for Fountain Hills were going. Immediately, we took action and shifted where that volume was going. So there was not any point in time where Fountain Hills recyclables were going to the landfill. So that material shifted to our Cave Creek Transfer Station, which is in North Phoenix. And it got transloaded from there to Friedman Recycling in South Phoenix. One of the biggest challenges with that point in time was there was a closure of the Phoenix facility in the northern part of town. So that would be our normal go-to for a situation like this as a backup plan, but due to it being down for upgrades, we had to find a different solution. So Friedman Recycling in South Phoenix was that solution. On, excuse me, on Christmas Eve, the North Recycling Facility that is operated by Phoenix reopened. So it's brand-new upgraded. It operates at a faster speed and rate than it did previously. We are the operators for that for the city of Phoenix. So since that point, all of Fountain Hills' volume is going to the Cave Creek Transfer Station, loaded up into those large trailers that you probably see up and down the 101 and going to North Gateway to be processed and recycled.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman?
I want to make a comment, but first a question. Do you get much in the way of problems or people who are upset with the pickups or the way you handle it or, do you get much of that?
We do hear some of that, yes. I know recently, we experienced a reroute of Mondays and Fridays and switching when trash and recycling were serviced. And that did experience a little bit of calls of concerns of why this was occurring. That was strictly due to this change. So instead of, the way that we used to operate is the trucks are coming from that Cave Creek Transfer Station, which is located on Deer Valley and the 101. And those trucks drive down to Fountain Hills, they service the material, and then they used to drive straight through out the Beeline Highway to Salt River to drop that material off of the recycling plant. They would then circle back through, pick up trash, come back home. When there isn't that stop in between, it just doesn't quite work. So now what we do is we drive through the town, pick up trash, dump it at the Salt River landfill, come back through for recycling.
I think it's rare to find a company that's as efficient and responsive as you folks have been for the town of Fountain Hills. I've been incredibly impressed. You really seem to be concerned about the citizens and want to be able to respond to any problems as quickly as possible. I think the recycle issue is a big case in point, which could have been handled a lot differently with a lot, with lesser effect. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? No? Thank you, Stephen. Thanks for coming so much. We appreciate your serving our community.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the call to the public. Do we have any cards, please?
Yes. We have one from Charles Holmes.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Charles Holmes from 16528 East Gunsite. We bought a condo, my wife and I bought a condo here for winter residency. This will be our fifth year now. And I just really, we really love the city and there are the gems in the city, the community center and the library. That's why we bought on gun site, so we're so close. And then, you know, the garden is added and then I go to the star parties. So you have these things, but you also have people like Rita Applegate at the garden and Ted Blank here with the astronomy. But I went to an event the other day, well, I'm actually a volunteer at Bob's Free Bikes and we're located over at East Valley Institute of Technology. And I knew things were going on there from the time I've spent there in the watch company and such, but I saw Mr. Miller and some of the other people that are now, there was an open house last week at EBIT and I just wanted to mention that, another asset in the community. And what, I was just so impressed with the facility. There's a photography studio there and interview studio, like a radio studio, so I don't know what you call it, audio studio. And the screening room, they've just done a tremendous job and I just wanted to make comment on that and encourage any business people that are operating out of their homes or maybe in a facility that maybe they're paying a little too much rent, but it's a great asset. So again, another asset in the community and I just want to say how happy we are to be here and how happy I was to go to the EBIT open house last week. And it just was amazing. So in addition to the school activities, there are these facilities for the business and it's just great to see the town working with the education and the Chamber of Commerce. So it's, I just want to make a positive comment and say, all right, we're very happy to be here. Thank you.
Wait a minute. No, thank you so much.
Come back again.
Keep waiting for something else. You are welcome any night, sir. Thank you. Any other cards? No? Thank you. Next we have our consent agenda items. Unless you want to take something off, could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have one, the first regular agenda item is about painting the 20 bollard lights at Fountain Park as part of a pilot program to determine durability and reduction of glare. I know we have a good staff report. Grady, is that on you?
Yes, I'll be doing it. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a request from Resident Ted Blank to conduct a pilot program to paint the light fixtures over at Fountain Park on the interior where the reflectors are. About a year ago, Mr. Blank approached me and asked if he could do one bollard to see if by painting the inside where the reflector is with a black matte finish of paint, if that would reduce the glare. He has tested that for about a year and felt that that test was successful and was able to reduce the glare by about 90% without significantly reducing the light from the fixture on the walkway pathways. So Mr. Blank is proposing to do an extension of that test to do another 10 bollards just south of the east parking lot, another 10 also by just south of the amphitheater with the goal again of reducing the glare. So the part of this test is going to determine if the lights that are all together, because he only did one light, and so it's hard to tell if this is going to produce the desired effect, which is not significantly reducing light, just the glare. And so by these being next to each other, it will be a better way of testing and evaluating these lights. The staff will also be involved in also evaluating, ensuring that the light that is emitted from these fixtures will be sufficient to still meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, which in public places like parks and such, you have to ensure that there's adequate lighting for people, that they're not, that we're not creating or posing safety issues. So that's what is before you tonight. I know Mr. Blank has some comments that he'd like to probably make as well and maybe answer any questions. So the part of this is we're going to go through this evaluation phase of this test pilot program. And the staff and Mr. Blank ultimately will come back to council with their findings and recommendations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions before we have Mr. Blank come up.
Thank you, Grady. Mr. Blank, if you wanted to come up, I think some, there's a couple of questions, I think, from some of the members and if you have anything you'd like to add, that'd be fine.
Do you have some pictures that I'll ask? If you can.
Thank you.
We can refer to those if necessary.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I think Grady summarized it well, so I'll just ask if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. It's just the head that you're going to paint? It's not the entire bollard?
That's correct. The area that's reflecting the light upward is just the interior angled portion of the bollard. And there's a, there are some photographs that I'm handing you now. I think one of the pictures towards the last page shows the before and after of the bollards, the single bollard that was painted. There's a, on, I guess picture number five on the second page might be the one to comment on. That's a poor man's engineering drawing of what we're really talking about. The LED lights, the actual LEDs that generate the light are well recessed inside the fixture, but the light that's being reflected comes from that angled surface that's below it. It's quite shiny and by painting that surface, we're able to reduce the amount of glare that reflects back up into people's eyes who are walking around on the path.
So are you painting these with just a shaker can and, or what type of material are you using?
We experimented with several kinds and we found that there's a material from Krylon called Camouflage Black that's in a spray can. It's actually designed for rifles, guns that are dragged through the brush. So it's a really strong, well-formulated resistant paint and it seems to have succeeded in resisting sprinkler heads and power washes and discs from the disc golfers and everything. There are no chips or any problems after that paint's been there for several months through the hottest part of the summer.
So the only, the only concern I have, which I totally agree with your thought pattern and what you're doing, so please don't think I'm being negative, but I have concerns that if we go out and paint 540 lights, that 10 years from now, what are we going to do if we have to go paint them again? Do you actually take this cone off? Can it be powder coated? Can we take it apart and actually get it powder coated for a longer lifetime than paint?
Well, not having designed it, I'm not totally sure, but to the best of my knowledge, the answer is no. It's assembled at the factory, the electrical wires go inside of it.
Sure.
I see what you mean. And we did experiment with bringing in another bollard that we thought had its own louvers that would replace the entire head of that one, just with a drop-in. But unfortunately, the sizes didn't match, so we couldn't do that either.
Good effort. Well, that is, Council, that's my only concern about this entire effort is the long-term maintenance. It seems to me that everything around the fountain requires a lot more maintenance than, you know, our benches all rusted out and we got to replace those. That's the only concern I have.
Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a concern as well. It's almost the opposite of Dennis's because my question was, you know, it sounds like just from the one light that you did that this is going to work and that it's effective. Molly thought, well, if we do 20 of them, then what if we determine, well, it doesn't really work that good, so how do we get the paint off? You know, back to the original condition if it's such tough paint, so.
Fair question. I did an experiment on the one that we painted. I went down there over the weekend with some paint thinner, some lacquer thinner, and with a little rubbing, I was able to get a big chunk of that paint off. So it will come off. There was no damage to the surface underneath. It went right back to its original silver coat. So with a little elbow grease, we'll be able to restore them to the original finish if that's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, because like I said, it does sound like it's probably going to be effective and perhaps the whole park will be done. We don't know yet, but obviously these lights have been in the headlines since day one and a source of, you know, conversation for quite a few years. So applaud your efforts and hopefully this will be a good solution.
Thank you.
Anybody over here? Oh, I'm sorry. Alan?
Go ahead.
Well, is staff going to be involved in helping paint all the bollards or do we have an organization that's going to help do it?
We have 23 resident volunteers so far who have signed up to help us paint the 20 bollards in a couple of weekends perhaps. So I don't think we have an issue with volunteers to help and it probably should take no more than about 15 minutes per head. So we'll do that with volunteer staff at no cost to the town. And then as long as it takes to confirm that everything continues to look good down there, that's as long as we'll wait before doing, before coming back to council with the results of that test.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Councilmember Brown, your question. So staff will be wanting to ensure that the paint is the paint that they would spec out for this particular purpose and that the removal, as Mr. Blank has said, will come off as easily as he's mentioning because the under coating is actually a powder coated finish that we paid extra for, for the conditions around the lake, which as you know are very caustic. So that's going to be something we'll just want to make sure that we supervise and our parks manager is very up on this particular matter and he's going to be very involved.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Ted, I think you pretty much answered the question I was going to ask, but I'll be a little more specific.
Sure.
Couple of weekends to do this and then approximately, how long after they're finished before you can analyze it and come back to us?
Well, there would be two phases to the measurements. One would be the measurements of the light intensity on the sidewalk and we could do that immediately. And then the other one would be the longevity of the coatings. And that, we would wait as long as council was comfortable waiting to make sure that everything was going to survive successfully in the environment. I figured that the summer would be the most, the most difficult to survive, so we painted one before summer, but who knows? Maybe we have to wait a full year. It's up to the council and the staff of the town.
So you've painted how many so far? Just one?
Just one so far.
And that was done when?
May of last year. So it's been through an entire summer.
Have you seen any deterioration in that period?
There's a slight coating of hard water deposit on the surface of the black paint, but it doesn't seem to have affected the reduction in glare at all. I was concerned about that, but I measured that again and it's still the same as it was before. You can see a faint coating of the white on it, but it's nothing that you would really find objectionable and it still does the job of the glare reduction.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? And are there any speaker cards?
Just his. And then we had 18 cards, written cards in support.
Okay. And we also had a few emails too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions or any other discussion, could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Is that good? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming and for your willingness to help. Our last action item is, a regular agenda item, is related to the League of Cities and Towns Legislative Bulletin. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the first meeting that we've had the legislative bulletins and so there are a number of bills that the League is tracking that have impacts on municipalities. There's quite a few that I'm not going to really go into, but if you have any in particular that you wish to discuss tonight or if you wish for staff to continue to track, we'd be more than happy to do so. The purpose of this agenda item is frequently we'll find that there are bills that either we wish to support or oppose. Frequently, it's more the other direction where we wish to oppose because they're trying to harm municipalities or there's some unintended consequences that harm municipalities. So this would be the opportunity for you to go ahead and give the consensus or direction to staff and we would get through a letter on your behalf that I would pen and it would go directly to the legislators who are the sponsors or go to the committees to implore them to either amend the bill or to change it or to not approve the bill. And if all else fails, then we typically, if the bills go through the process, then we'll also communicate with the governor's office where the governor's office is the last stop for these bills for, before they turn into laws. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you have any bills that you have been, you noticed that you'd like to have some attention, we'd be happy to open that up for you right now.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I know in the first bulletin issued the other week and the mayor noted at that time as well about transportation and how the representative, Otto Prescott, was working with stakeholders to try to find another, you know, revenue source to address deferred maintenance, particularly on local streets and several cities and towns, you know, testified to that effect. And obviously, we're in the same boat in terms of, you know, millions of dollars of deferred maintenance that we need to perform on our streets at some point in time. So obviously, any movement in that direction, I think, is in time, so obviously, any movement in that direction, I think, is, be very pertinent to our town, and then, you know, it mentions the fuel tax, and that there hasn't been an increase since 91, and obviously with, you know, compared to years ago, the gas prices are down, and with all the new technology out there, there's less gas being used. Has there been any, I mean, do we know why it hasn't been raised since 91, just because they don't want to raise taxes, or is there some other reason?
Yes, yes, yes. I do, I have heard that there is going to be some movement because of the alternative fuel vehicles, the electric vehicles, for instance, and hybrids. Right now, they're getting quite a break on vehicle registration, that they're going to start doing something eventually, because what's happening is they'll be, you know, the idea of the taxes is to be like a user fee, so those that are using the roads and the streets and the highways, that they pay a portion, but right now, they're really not, they're not doing that, so there's some talk that there will be some way of trying to recapture that through maybe the registration fees that these folks pay on those types of vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they're not polluting, but they're obviously using the streets the same as any other vehicle, so that's, you know.
It's going to become more of a, if they don't do something soon, they're introducing electric rigs and, you know, long-haul trucking vehicles that will be electric at some point, so that's going to be, the heavy weight of those are still going to be on the highways, so should be some way of doing that, but this is something that definitely is long overdue to try to increase those, the taxes, but it's a law of diminishing return, as you can see.
If you don't want to be on the calls on the Monday mornings, because it's kind of hard for a lot of people to do that, the call notes that they send out, there's a lot more in it than what the bulletin's doing, it might give you more of an idea of something that you might want to come and say, yes, indeed, we would love a letter. I just want to mention two bills real quick, because one of them, and kind of interested in your point of view, because it's a prime contracting bill, 2404, that says any project that doesn't increase square footage would be taxed at point of sale, you know, we talk about this every year, but the League believes that this is strongly going to hurt communities that don't have large construction supply houses, and that it will, you know, hurt small towns like ours or smaller towns, and interestingly enough, it could hurt the state of Arizona because a lot of materials come from other states, so it's early, you know, we're not to the point where we're worried that something's actually going to get passed, but at some point, we may want to take a stand on that if it looks like it's going to go further. And then another one, which I think everybody would probably want us to oppose, is candidate signs increases the time from 60 to 120 days that candidate signs can be in a right-of-way. We were talking earlier with the clerk, and that actually allows some people to put signs up before they officially qualify. And then the Gilbert case, which we've all been talking about forever, which says you can't regulate signs based on content, would result in a potential proliferation of signs in the right-of-way for a lot longer, so we would need to keep an eye on that one, too, so we want to keep our town beautiful. So we may want to do something with that in the future.
Great. And are any of you getting those notes? I think the mayor is. Are all of you getting those as well? Not the legislative bulletins, but the notes from the Monday calls? Good, okay, that's great. Want to make sure you're all getting those.
Thank you. Council, a discussion or direction to the town manager, anybody? Councilman?
When we have staff presentations, we get the presentations pretty much in front of us on the screen, but lots of folks are not staff members and give presentations, and maybe it's age-related, but I can't read them.
Well, I, I was going to bring up to Captain the same thing, there should have been a handout that you guys had in advance.
What I was about to say, what I was about to say is that can we require everybody who's doing a presentation other than staff to provide handouts for the council?
Absolutely, and we'll do that from this point forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we adjourn, I just want to remind everybody that Valentine's Day is before our next meeting, and Stephanie is having a big vow renewed out at the fountain, she's trying to break the world's record, so go sign up and show up there, it'll be fun. Anything else for the good of the order?
Move your hand.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good one.